Called our November 2020 edition of our Central School District Board of Directors meeting to order. I'd like to start the meeting tonight with our flag salute. Jerry, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent to go over the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Yes, we've had, obviously, a couple of changes because we've had some changes that happened last week from the governor, which we'll get into. So a couple of things just for adjustments. We have removed from the administrative report, we were going to give you an update from our whole child coordinator about the mental health supports going on right now in the school, so we will move that to the December meeting. And then we also removed from the business agenda, we have been working on a cooperative sponsorship with Kings Valley tied to athletics, specifically baseball, and that has also been removed to and will be moved to the December meeting. So those are the two changes on the agenda.
All right. Let's get started now. Can you remind me for tonight's meeting, communications from the floor?
Yes.
How we're handling that?
Yeah, so we're going to go sort of in a, with the Student Success Act, we have posted via the, our agenda, the contract that, for the grant, for the Student Success Act, specifically the student investment account. With that, we have to, one of the steps is opening it up for public comment, which at last, when Emily and I talked right before the meeting, we did not have any, so I'm going to check to make sure that that is still the case. Yep, so, just, but I'll, let me just give a little bit of background of where we are and just reminders of the process from the student success grant. So the purpose of the grant is to provide funding to assist in meeting students' mental, behavioral health needs, and increasing academic achievement and reducing academic disparities for students from racial or ethnic groups that have historically experienced academic disparities, students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, students who are homeless, and students who are foster children. Originally, when we started this, I'm going to say pre-COVID, we went through a process with our community, with the chats, to really develop our plan. Originally, the amount that the state was projecting us was about $2.1 million of additional grant money, but obviously with what has happened because of the pandemic and a little bit, as we know, economically, this grant amount is $863,200, so about 41% of the amount that the state had projected. We focused, based off of that, we focused on the priorities that were included in our original plan, that we felt that and know that we can sustain, sustainably offer. And just to give you a couple of those, would, those include our current Polk County school-based mental health contract, our district whole child coordinator, who is really helping us with the mental health and social emotional, several behavior specialists, English language development specialists, communication coordinator, and then if there is money left over, really focusing on professional development. Again, that's one of the areas that we had to shift money. So professional development focused on multi-tiered systems of support, which really talks about intervention and coaching, and then obviously professional development with emphasis in equity, social emotional learning, trauma-informed practices, restorative practices as an example. So that's really where the focus of this grant will go for the remainder of this year. And again, I will tell you already, the supports on the mental health side have been, I am so glad we took the risk two years ago, and I'm glad that this money can continue to support that, especially in the times that we're in. So I'm grateful for that. So with that, if there's no comments, we can move to our normal standing reports.
So that was the Student Success Act, public comments. Are there any other public comments that we've received? No others at this point? Okay, then we can go ahead and move on to our standing reports. Do we have a representative from CEA?
Yes.
On the meeting tonight?
I believe we should have Chris Jordan. Should be in the queue here. He is...
Hey, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, I was just promoted to a panelist, so I'm very excited.
Oh.
So I have been asking central high school members some of the things that they were doing, and I got a lot of overlap things, so a lot of them are, it's a little shorter of a list, but several hit the same things over and over again. So from the ag department, the ag department ran a successful lab with students doing soil labs, and the teacher said that they may have finally gotten soil out of the keyboard. I provided some pictures to Dr. Kubista, I don't know if she, she had said maybe she could get them posted, but no problem if not. And so they did a soil lab, and then the FFA students created a fall ag in the classroom experience for all of our district's first graders, and sent a pumpkin home to every first grader with a booklet of pumpkin facts, lessons, and materials, and they helped facilitate stu-, excuse me, facilitate students from Willamina, Dallas, Amity, and Yamhill Carlton High Schools to get their own pumpkins out to their own elementary schools for similar hands-on learning experiences. And then I had a picture of a whole bunch of pumpkins from the high school.
Try and get that up here in a second. It's part of my first part of the presentation, so we're working on that, Chris.
They'll show up. So we had people that were very excited about getting a CTE program specifically for theater started, people that thought it was awesome. Several staff members went to an avid trading in October that was specifically about helping for online courses, and they're using that quite a bit. There we go, we have the soil lab on the left and the huge bunch of pumpkins on the right. We, now I have to find my spot here, we've been using many of the things with help for our online and distance classes, and staff were saying it was making a difference in help already. Our Central High School AP World History students, who took the AP World History test in May of 2020, beat both the state and global average test scores, and many of our students earned college credit as sophomores or juniors, so pretty exciting. Central High School's Black Panther Student Union will be having its first meeting this month. The Black Panther Student Union serves as an affinity group for our black students, a cross-cultural training group for students learning to be better allies, and a service club for positive contributions to the community. It will be the second year of the club, and they're excited to see what the students can accomplish together. We have been doing lot, not live, sorry, recorded video updates on Mondays for our announcements, and so many teachers were excited to be part of that, and we're excited that our students are actually the ones doing the technical, video editing, video filming, creative work with, with the fonts and the overlays and the transitions, so that they're all up and ready to go on Mondays. So excited about that collaboration between staff and students. So people are very excited about our fall athletics that we're engaged in, and Power Peers had a drive-through trick-or-treat here, I believe, last weekend, I wasn't given a date, but I assume that's when it was. The multimedia students, video production and graphic design students have figured out how to use remote desktop, so they can use their Chromebooks to access the powerful computers that we have in room 123 at the high school, and so they're able to start doing some of the things with the Adobe software and some of the powerful media tools that we have there, so they're very excited about what they're going to be making with those. In our intro to CTE classes, we have what they're calling a game of life, to facilitate students learning real-life skills such as job applications, sorry, filling out job applications, making a working budget spreadsheet, adjusting one's budget based on what life throws at you, filling out a W-4, starting a bank account, those type of life skills. The high school is using tech talk teachers, which several people mentioned, amazing, concise, empathetic individuals who answer questions and help us keep our technology skills. And then many people mentioned the restorative practice group is doing amazing work. It is leading to very trauma-informed approaches that are so helpful right now, and having the skills as teachers and as staff members to help students has been huge. And we are also very proud of the equity committee that we have at the high school and our ninth grade on-track committee, which is focused on making sure ninth graders are on track to graduate. So many, not quite as many things, but a lot of things that were mentioned by many people, so that was pretty exciting. So thank you very much. That is the CEA's November report.
Thanks, Chris. Great report.
That was fabulous, Chris. Fabulous. Really good news.
All right, that brings us to our financial reports. Turn it over to Cease.
Thank you. Good to see you all here. The financial report was in your packet and had a chance to review that with you at our, at your retreat as well, and so some notes about that are, at the end of the first quarter, the September 30th numbers would typically be about one-fourth of the way through our budget, and in the packet I outlined the variances, the differences in revenue and expense from that. Nothing particularly alarming at this point, a little bit of exciting news about our carry-in being a little higher, but as far as expenses goes, once we negotiate that final price on the K-12 invoice and determine the impact on this, we will have a better idea of how that year-to-date is looking. So I also included, were there any questions about the expenses or revenue in the general fund?
And just to add to that, I will be probably, I will be coming in December with K-12. Again, we've still been negotiating because things that are continuing to take place, so we'll have what I'm going to say is the first half of our contract for the year in working with them, coming to you in December. So that will, I think that you will, we are having a good conversation and collaboration with them, so I think we're going to be in a good space with them as a partner as we move forward.
So another question, the other thing included in your packet was our PERS update, and again, every October, the PERS board releases the rates. Every two years in October, the PERS board releases the rates for 2021-23. We got advisory rates a year ago at this time that showed a little bit of a drop, actually, from the current biennium, and the final rates are even a skosh bit lower than that. So that is good news. That helps us plan to have some savings in PERS, and I calculate, if it was based on last year's salaries, that would have amounted to $375,000 in savings to us to meet our pension obligations. But note, again, this is still, they've been on a very upward trend, so it's still relatively high, and it's still a significant portion of our employment cost to keep those up for, for our staff. But also included was a chart that showed, again, the very dramatic shift in our workforce from heavily tier-one, tier-two employees, and the switch almost exactly over a very short period of folks who have come into the PERS system since 2003 and are considered that tier-three or ops rate. So that helps a bit because those folks, the rate we pay for them is quite a bit lower, the lower of the two rates. That was what I had for you as far as finances go.
Okay, any questions for Cease? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our administrative reports. We're introducing a new standing report tonight that came out of our board PLC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it's regarding our district equity initiative. And so each month, we'll be giving an update on our district equity efforts, which we have a committee formed on, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent to provide that update.
Yeah, and this, I hope, is the only time I will be updating for this first one, just to sort of lay the foundation of what we've been doing. So this report is actually focused on the district equity committee and who is involved with it, and some of the first steps that we have, have taken. We had originally shared out to staff that had shown an interest in being a part of this committee, they fin-, they answered three questions for us, a small group mixed of administrators and classified and certified, a small subcommittee that really had been working over the summer with some of the Ready Schools Safe Learners. We developed a rubric and then scored our applicants because we really were wanting to be intentional about this work, and just had a really good turnout. So we are excited, we have been up and functioning since the beginning of October, really that was our first meeting, we've been meeting every two weeks. And just, I'm going to share tonight, the members and then the beginning steps that we have done thus far, and then, as I said, was we come to board meetings, my goal is that the, the members of the committee will, will do more of the presenting, but I'm, I'm doing the first one. So our members include Antonia, she goes by Tony Casil from Talmadge Middle School, Alicia Preston, who is from Monmouth Elementary, Amanda Smith, who is, works out of the district office and supports all the schools, Ashley Wildfang, who is one of our principals at Ash Creek, or is our principal at Ash Creek, Ben Gorman from Central High School, Donna Servigna, who's our high school principal, Esmeralda Amesqua from Central High School, Hope, excuse me, Hope Mwaniki from Ash Creek, Christina Shepard, who is also a, works out of the district office, Lorian Brooks from Central High School, Michael Walker from Monmouth Elementary, Peggy Klein is our representative from the board, Rosa Diaz Avery, who's one of our administrators, assistant principal at Talmadge, Sterling Roberts from Independence, Sonia Lyon from Talmadge, and then myself. We, it is a mix of really administration, licensed, and classified staff. We're continuing to look at and recruit other members, but again, this first round was really the, the people that wanted to be a part of this and start the work together. So thus far, our focus really has been really building community, because when you talk about equity, it's, it's a, you want to have a good foundation and, and trust-building amongst each other. So we've really been focusing on what's the purpose of the committee, when and how are we going to expand, because we've talked about potentially having parents or other community partners as part of the committee, so, you know, looking into that. We've developed what's really our initial, initial committee tasks, so different things such as what's professional development look like, potentially short-term, three years from now, as we did, as we develop that, where does student voice come in as part of that process, are there other things that we need to look at in our hiring and retention of staff, just some of the task areas that have been identified, and we're starting to articulate that and really order what our priorities are going to be, because that list can get very, very large very quickly, and so we'll continue to do that. And then, really, the first task that we have done is actually coming to you tonight. We have reviewed, and the committee is recommending, the All Students Belong policy, which is in its first reading tonight. So again, already have taken that first, first step with that, we, and we're really excited to share that with you tonight, and that really is just the starting steps that we have taken, and, and again, we will continue to share every month our progress as we move forward. So with that, I'll, I'll open up for any questions from the board.
Well, it's, you know, it's something I think we had a really good discussion around, and it's, it's good to see it now on our agenda, and we don't move things onto our standing agenda lightly, so look forward to hearing more from the committee as they get rocking and rolling.
Well, I was, I was talking to them meeting when they, when the committee looked at this, this policy, and I have to say that they were very enthusiastic about going through it, they were very thoughtful, and I believe, you know, they were very careful, and definitely had the, the thought of students and staff in mind going through it. So it was, it was a really good process.
Thanks, Peggy. Great. Okay, that brings us to our Division 22 presentation.
All right, I, with, tonight, as we annually do, a little bit different, the Oregon Department of Education actually has, we normally do Division 22 in February, that has actually shifted now to, to November, and again, this is the standards for public elementary and secondary schools, really the review for the 2019-20 school year. And so with that, I turn your attention to Mr. Jason Clark, who, with our presentation tonight. So thank, welcome, Jason.
Thank you, School Board. Thank you, my name is Jason Clark, I'm the Director of Program Planning and Project Management. One of the highlights of my job is this yearly report out of our Division 22 assurances that we're meeting all of those as, as a district. And before I even get started, I just want to share that a lot of this information is all about compiling data, evidence, information, that our administrative assistants, secretaries, registrars, administrators, all work together to compile this, to make sure that we do have our, our tasks in a row. With that being said, right around this time, November 1st of each year, school districts are to report to their local school boards, the district standing with respect to all Division 22 standards for public elementary, secondary schools, set forth in Oregon Administrative This past spring, on April 16th, 2020, the State Board of Education adopted a new administrative rule. This was OAR 581-022-0103. This rule established a streamlined set of Division 22 standards in the effect of the 2019-2020 school year, in recognition of the challenges faced by districts to accommodate for the emergency shift to distance learning for all in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Another view of the streamlined District 22 standards, and if you can see the, the slide there, on the left-hand column, that is last year's Division 22 requirements, there were 54 standards designed for fully intact school year, and February 15th was the deadline. With our streamlined approach, we have 17 standards, it's designed to accommodate a school year disrupted by COVID-19 pandemic, and it has a November 15th deadline. So that's a good comparison of what we've done in the past and, and this year. The next slide's another one that we, we borrowed from ODE that just gave a really nice snapshot of the 17 that were required for standards. As you take a look at those, diploma requirements, record-keeping, safety as a priority, counseling are the main focuses. The next slide, the Division 22 project objectives are to collect evidence to show compliance for each of the 17 requirements under Division 22. The evidence that will be collected and organized align for the evaluation, identifying strengths and areas of improvement. The district administrative team will then evaluate the evidence of each OAR and determine the district's compliance with the Division 22 standards. The next couple of slides are a, just a look at the project charter, Division 22 project charter that we use to just keep track of our data. I'm not going to go through each one of those, but we have all 17 standards, and on the far right-hand column, we track our, our notes and evidence of each one of those. The next screen is very similar as we work our way through our 17 standards.
Please, just for, so we can see the last grouping. Yep, thank you.
There we go. Okay. Again, that's just an example of how we, we do keep track of the standards, and again, in the past, we've had 54, down to 17 this year, but we've got good evidence for, for all of those. So our next steps as a district, tonight, we, Central School District 13J has shared its compliance status with the school board. Now, we'll post our Division 22 outcomes to our district website by November 3rd this week, right around the corner, and following the board report, Central School District will complete and submit the annual form to the ODE via Indistar by November 15th, 2020. And the Central School District, again, is in compliance with the Division 22 standards. And before I take questions, again, I just really want to go back and just share that, again, this, this is really is a lot of work that is done by many people, and it's just important to, to recognize, and again, I want to say thank you to those that were involved with that. Questions? Questions tonight? Dr. Joe?
I'm really happy they have shortened their box of lists. I didn't think a certified librarian in each school. We, along with many, many, many other districts, put paraprofessionals in our libraries instead of certified media specialists, that's still there in Division 22.
Wasn't on this year's standards, no mention of it.
Yeah, I, I think this, because this is specific to the 2019-20, because of what's going on with the, obviously with the pandemic, I believe, once we get through this, it will go back to the 55, and that is still on there. So yes, that is one of the things that we continue to work through. Again, I, although ours are classified, I think we have a great group of staff that are doing and supporting what, you know, again, some of the things that they're even doing right now, which we'll talk about probably next meeting, is how they're even checking out books right now to, or starting the process of checking out books to students, is pretty phenomenal, what everyone has done at the buildings.
And so, Jason, are we in compliance?
Yes, we are.
Good.
Yep. Feels good. Any other questions?
I'm going to ask one, but it seems like Jen answered that just as far as, we're going to go back to, once stuff gets back tomorrow, go back to the hiring.
You know, this year, we're, we're into a lot like last spring, really, as we're into virtual learning, right? So it really just, I don't know, as we move into this year and see what this year holds for us, there may be some adjustments next year as well.
Yeah, they, they may stick with, again, as Jason, Jason and I talk about this, I think that the 17 could be through, for the 2021 year. Again, I think we'll continue to get that guidance as we move through the rest of this year. I would assume that's more likely than not, but again, I do think at some point, we will go back to the 55 moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on that. That brings us to our superintendent's report. Turn it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, and I'm going to have, if we could pull up the presentation, I'm going to start with the new news that we received on Friday. For those that may not know, on Friday at around 11:00 a.m., the governor released new information and metrics to support and move school districts toward... Uh, to support and move, uh, school districts, uh, toward in-person learning for students. So, um, go ahead and, uh, if you want to go to the green slide, next one, next one. One more, excuse me. I thought it was a more. So I, what I'm gonna share tonight are, uh, some of the new, uh, really steps. That we are shifting to based off of, of what was shared, um, with us. Uh, superintendents learned about it late, uh, Thursday evening. And then obviously we waited until the governor released that on Friday morning. So what this does as an example, so this first slide, it changes the new metrics. And combines to a two-week look back, which really aligns with the Center for Disease Control. And what they have been doing, uh, for some of the metrics. The state is moving away from, if you remember, we were, uh, required to have three weeks in a row. A certain amount of per, uh, per cases, per hundred thousand, as well as the test, uh, positive test rate. And so we're moving away from that towards that two-week, uh, look back. And that's a combined two weeks, uh, together. The other piece I'll note from here is that with that, the state, uh, we also had to have, uh, county, state. And a state, uh, test positivity rate, and that is no longer. The state is not going to be part of the criteria to open up schools in either in-person or hybrid learning. So again, this is the first switch. We're moving on the left side. You can see we're moving away from those, um, three weeks in a row. And really looking at a two-week, um, review of, of the metrics. Next slide for me, please. So this is the new, what I'm calling the new metrics table, and I'm gonna walk through it. So, um, because our county is over 30,000 people. If you look at this, we are that top line. You'll see the, the headers at the top, but that line right below it, that is the metrics. Uh, that we will be moving to because we're over, uh, 30,000, uh, within our county. If Central School District has less than 50 cases per hundred thousand in a two-week period. We could begin to actually transition to K-12 in-person hybrid. So again, I'm gonna go, really the gray is the, the metrics and the instructional model. The green shows that you can move to, uh, really K-12 in-person instruction. And so that, again, if, if we have less than 50 cases in a two-week period average. Uh, we could begin to move all of our K-12 into in-person learning slash hybrid approaches. Shift to the yellow, um, Central actually currently falls into the 50 to less than 100 cases per hundred thousand. Uh, this will allow us to begin to phase in in-person slash hybrid learning, starting at the K-3 level. And again, I want to be clear about that, starting at, and phasing in at the K-3 level. And adding, uh, as we are successful, we be, can begin to add in additional grades up to fifth grade. Uh, you'll see in the yellow section, there is a, a reference to sixth grade. Should, uh, sixth grade have been at the elementary, then we potentially could have moved in that direction. Um, but because it is separate with the middle school, um, we would, um, again, it's not gonna be part of that, that criteria of, of moving to that K-5. The other piece, the orange is really what I call the transition space. So if our cases are, uh, significantly over 100 and in between 100 and 200 per hundred thousand. Then we would begin conversations to move back into, uh, comprehensive distance learning. Now that doesn't mean, let's say, next week, and I use that as an example, because we've already seen the numbers already this week. Uh, we could be up over, we could potentially be close to that, uh, 100 mark. That does not mean that we have to stay in, um, that we have to stay in comprehensive distance learning. We can still maneuver towards and phase in, uh, to the, um, K-3. But again, that's a little bit different, uh, than it has been in the past. Uh, it allows us to be able to flow because it is very difficult. It is going to be very difficult to move in and out of comprehensive distance learning and in-person slash hybrid learning. However, if you go all the way to the far right where I call it red, it looks pink, but I'm calling it red. Um, if we're over 100 ca- cases, then, or excuse me, if we're over 200 cases, then we're gonna need to go back into comprehensive distance learning. So, um, again, a little bit of that, that shift, uh, did see. Go ahead.
So you're using the term in the central school district?
Yep.
So that is actually our physical territory?
Currently.
And we're able to get the metrics for specifically our district area?
No, 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 it's based off our county. It's specific to Polk County.
Yeah, sorry.
It's, sorry if I did not clarify that. So if you're looking at the top, the really what we are, are now held accountable to is the Polk County, um, metrics, which is what we have been before. So I'm gonna get to that. Yep. You guys have some, that you guys, you guys, I appreciate that, cuz that, you are right on. Where I'm gonna go next, um, with some of that. The, the state positivity, uh, or the state test, excuse me, state positivity test is also part of that. So again, that's still the 5%, excuse me, I apologize. Let me take that back. The state is off now. The county positivity test is still in play. So again, if it's under five, uh, really we could move to that, uh, all K-12, uh, in, in-person or moving towards that. Again, uh, you'll see in the metrics will all show here in a little bit, uh, that we're actually below that. So we're green right now in the co- county testing. Um, but we are, uh, yellow within the county, uh, case per hundred thousand, the total cases. I'm speaking right now Polk County. And I will get to, um, I'll, we'll show you where Marion County will, will come into that piece of it. So again, this is really that new shifting of, to the two weeks and the actual numbers have, you know, it's much higher. So we used to be 10 per hundred thousand. Now, really, we're falling under 50 or between 50 and 100. That we can start moving into that in-person and learning. Uh, next slide for me, please. So a couple, um. A couple pieces to, to consider, and again, this goes back to what we've talked about. Um, we must still take into consideration Marion County, uh, as over 10% of our staff reside, uh, there. And so that is still going to, uh, be in play here. However, uh, I now have the ability, or really Jason and I, um, because Jason does oversee a lot of the safety and security for this. Uh, we'll be working with the Polk County Health Authority to, uh, hopefully make a collaborative decision to see. What I say is our distance from Salem. And again, because our percentage is again, about 18% of our staff do come from, um, Marion County. That is there enough distance that we could still potentially move towards in-person and hybrid learning at the K-3 level?
I think another factor there may be where in Marion County?
Right.
Right? So they have case by zip code. And if the zip code is north of Salem or North Salem. And, and most of our staff lives in West Salem, for example, or, or, well, they're in Marion County, so South Salem. We may be able to talk through that too. I think those are the factors we're gonna be able to use to discount Marion County.
Right.
But if it's all South Salem and that's where all of our staff lives, they probably won't.
Right. Yep. So again, this is, this is a major shift as well. Previous, really, we were tied to, I mean, we were very tightly tied to Marion County. So this gives me, uh, gives us a little bit more flexibility to have conversation with, um, our Polk County, uh, health authorities. Which again, who, who have been great collaborators as we've gone through this, these trying times at times. Uh, next slide for me, please. Uh, and again, this just shows the breakdown. So you can see in the middle column, uh, specifically that is our, uh, shows that we would start to be able to move to in-person. That hybrid at the elementary level. So again, these are all the counties in the state. Uh, you can see on the, the left side, those are all the counties that cannot do any in-person learning. And then the far right in the green, they are allowed to move to in-person for all K-12. Start to move in that direction.
Kind of a complicated question, but it might happen. So what if we open K-3?
We're gonna, and I'm gonna, we're, I'm gonna be really clear about this. We are going to phase in our approach for K-3.
What if somebody from Lynn County wants to do a transfer because they can't go to school yet?
So I have, so since, um, all of this have started. I really have not let any out-of-district. Tran- if you live in our residency and you move in, obviously you have the ability to come to our school district. Uh, we've had very minimal out-of-district transfers requested. I do have them both, and I've had them at all diff- all three levels. Because of what has been happening with the county, uh, metrics and how we were tied to other metric, or other counties. Or could be depending on our, uh, students. Uh, I, I have not allowed any in dis- out-of-district transfers in. Now, if you were with us already, so you were sort of that grandfathered in, this would be any new, uh, student that came in. Now, again, that is hard because you worry about enrollment in our ADM. But I also, the safety in, of our students and, and our, really our community was my priority. Um, so, uh, you know, I really made that decision at the beginning of the year to really, and that's what I put on the, when I send it back, denying it. I say at this point, because of the situation that we're in and other counties and, and students coming from other counties can. You know, be detrimental to us opening up. You know, I, I'd say at this point, we're not open to out-of-district. So again, if you were, if you were here previously with us, we, we allowed it. Again, we'd have not had over 10% from any area, which is, which has been great. But that's how I have, have worked through that this year. Was hard decision. But I think it was right for what, what we need to do within our community. Uh, next slide for me, please. So, um, there is a change to limited, limited in-person. And, um, I, I want to say, uh, I think, uh, the letter that we put forth to the state. Um, and my continued conversation in asking for a little bit more flexibility with limited in-person, I think helped get us here. So I'm appreciative of, of you all in our conversations at our last board meeting. As well as the continued conversation with our, our principals. So again, the limited in-person, uh, now has shifted from, we used to only be able to do 10 students in a cohort. We can move towards 20 students in a cohort, I want to be clear. But that 20 has to still be six feet apart, you know, masked. And still having the ability to go have good, uh, hand hygiene. So.
We can put 20 on, the same 20 on a bus then?
So I can put 20 on a bus? That was one of our big conversations and what I had shared with the state in some back and forth conversations with them. Of one of the struggles of why we were asking for larger, uh, sizes. So that has, uh, allowed that. And again, you know, as an example, uh, so the Henry Hill Gym out here, that potentially could hold 20 students. So really giving us a little bit more flexibility, uh, to move to some limited in, in-person. And I, and I'll share that with why and who that may affect. It also removed, there was a limit of that we could only have 250 students in one day in a building. Uh, that has been removed. That allows us really to have more flexibility. Really because the focus of, is on K-3 to start. Uh, we are having conversations with, um, our principals at the middle school and high school. Uh, about what does limited in-person look like for both of them? And so that really will allow them to start bringing in students. We've, we've started to work on some definitions of which students come in first. Obviously, as I've shared with you all, first group is those that do not have internet or have not had any access to learning. Uh, and then we'll build our definitions of who's next, uh, from there. And, and actually have a, a great team already working on that. Um, and have, have had some good thinking around that. So, um, this also potentially would allow us to possibly begin to have conversations again. About some learning hubs with the community. So again, that, that a little bit opens up our partnership. We'll, we'll be having, uh, and I'll talk about some next steps and, and what we're, where we might go with some of that. Um, the, the one disadvantage, however, is that it, uh, we were hoping that potentially this limited in-person might move to three hours in a day. Uh, it did not. It is still in that two-hour, uh, timeframe. So, uh, again, win in the larger sizes and the ability to not have to, you know, really, manu- we can maneuver. So again, the high school has some big spaces where they potentially could bring in some, some cohorts of 20 and, and be able to do that safely. And if they were to go over 250 students, we don't have to worry about that now, uh, as an example. Uh, next, next slide for me, please. So this is, this is what it's going to, what we're gonna start to share with the community. It's a little bit of a different look than what we've done before. But again, I think that we're trying to just show the colors. You'll see Marion is on there right now, um, because I think it's important. And just to give you an idea, so you can see, I believe, um, the cases were, is it 77? Is that correct? 73? I can't see the average.
78.
Thank you. Yeah, so the current moved us, just to give you an idea. So the, the, the current one, which is 1018, so the next two-week look back, 1018 through 1031 is actually. The average is about 83, 83, uh, cases per hundred thousand. So we've actually gone up. Um, but the average, uh, test is about, is 4.5. So again, we're in the green there. Marion County, however, um, just because again, this is gonna be part of my conversation with the health, um, health authority, Polk County. Uh, this, this two-week period again, from 1018 through 1031, they have jumped to over 220 cases per hundred thousand. So again, I, I say that because again, um, we're doing some great work, uh, as a community. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But again, we are still gonna have to, part of my conversation or part of Jason and my conversation is going to have to be with them about where, where. And how does Marion County play into that? Uh, next slide for me, please. So a couple of the next steps that we're gonna, going to move forward with. First and foremost, um, we met Friday with our administrators. And what I, what I am gonna say is did some, uh, a beginning administrator brainstorming, going through the, some of these metrics. As we are doing tonight, but then doing some initial brainstorming. Um, we will meet tomorrow morning again for several hours to, to work through some of those as well. And then tomorrow afternoon, um, I am meeting with union leadership to begin our general conversations and potential approaches. Of how we phase into our K-3 in-person slash hybrid learning. Uh, on Wednesday, we'll meet with a community committee. Uh, we had a meeting with them last week. I had shared, we had talked about, we're gonna check in again November 18th. Obviously, when Thursday happened, um, I wanted to pull them back together. They have been great. They're really good thought partners. Uh, we are adding in a few more elementary parents to that because obviously the, the first approach is K-3. Um, so we will be having a community, community committee meeting on Wednesday again at 6 o'clock. Yeah, we have actually two, uh, Peggy?
Yeah.
And, uh, Darcy. Um, are both on that. Um, and then we will, as we continue to build, we'll con- uh, we'll continue throughout this, these next weeks, communicating to our families. Um, either both from a district perspective or from what I'm gonna say are our building level administrators, um, both at all levels. As we start to build what this will look like, uh, moving, moving forward. Um, and then what we will have to do is, um, we will need to update, update our, uh, district and schools' operational blueprint. Which is what we have built. Again, most of it is our normal protocols. It would just be sh- uh, shifting our instructional model, um, for elementary. And then just making reference if we are going to move to limited in-person, uh, for the middle school and high school, moving, moving forward with that. Um, one of the things I want to, um, emphasize, uh, as we start down this path. Is it is going to be really important if we want to stay open. As a community and supporting our kids and wanting to be back in school. It is gonna be very important that we social distance, that we are wearing face masks. That, um, you know, we focus on that cohorting, um, specifically in schools, because that's gonna be very important to us. The continued good, uh, hand washing hygiene, uh, that we want families to do. And then obviously the cleaning and disinfecting that we will have in, in the school. Again, I, I, I say that because, uh, we have had many different events. Of which, uh, Mr. Clark is the, what I call the approver. He, he is the one that is allowing events to take place. We got, and I'm just gonna. We got, and I'm just going to share it again, and I say this because I think these practices are why we're being successful. One, we had a graduation which was much more stricter than we have now and we're successful. No cases. We have had orientations as we started the school year, again, in-person and virtual, socially distanced, everyone masked, no issues, no cases. We have athletics going. We have some arts going. So again, we have seen some successes and I wholeheartedly believe that that is partly because of some of the pieces that we're doing. So again, you're going to hear me say that over and over because I do believe it is helping us be successful in allowing our, these events or these types of programming that we've allowed in-person to take place. So again, I'm just emphasizing that because I do want to be able to keep things open and moving in a positive direction for our in-person learning. So with that, I'm going to just open up for questions from the board to me.
What's the status, I guess, if I have a third grader and I opted for online-only learning? I still have that option, right?
Yeah. So we're in the midst of looking at another survey out to families. We had talked about going from semester to semester. So we have our current metrics of, in the buildings of where and what families had chosen. We are working on that and really are going to, that's one of our first tasks tomorrow morning is to finalize that. We have that out to principals, getting some feedback to be able to launch that to see what types of shifting we may see with families. Families are not required to come into the building. We will still have those other options available. That's again, some of the conversations we will continue with our principals. I think we've learned a lot this first part of the year on being in the virtual and then what we are concerned about of what some of the barriers will be as we come in person and what that's going to look like. I know change is hard for people. I think everyone needs to be prepared that change is going to continue to happen throughout this year. This is where we are right now. I believe it will change again. Again, I don't mean that in a bad way. I just think that we're going to continue to see things shift as we finish and move through the rest of the 2021 school year. So again, this is where we are. We continue to build and gather feedback and, you know, move forward with that. But that, those will still be options on the table, Don.
My other question was just, maybe I was staring at something else when you were talking through it, but on the calendar that you had up, we start with the limited.
So we're still, we're still working through those pieces. Where that calendar was a jumping off point. We'll continue those conversations tomorrow with the principals. Some of those ideas will be shared with our union leadership tomorrow afternoon. Again, our conversations with the building principals last Friday and then obviously as we're going in tomorrow is how do we phase this in in a safe manner? There are, we've got a lot of learning from summer school. Again, summer school also successful, had 200 and some kids in, no cases, no issues. So clearly we have built and I give great credit to Mr. Clark as well as the subcommittee that really focused on the public health protocols. So again, that's a first starting point. Those are some of our initial ideas that we'll continue to sort of tease out tomorrow, meet with union leadership, talk through with them and then share with the community committee, get some feedback and then we'll start to share out to the community, here's what we believe our phasing in will look like.
I guess I was just going to clarify that general thinking at this point is that we would space things out over like a month time.
That's our, that is what we are trying to look at.
Going faster than that, first of all, we have a fair chance that the coronavirus case rate is going this way and so we may just get started and have everything shut back down again. So I would hate to see us invest huge amounts of resources just to have them set aside again for a period of six months.
Yes. And we're also coming into the two months that I say are the, a little bit, I call them the wonky months a little bit because of, you know, we have a break for, you know, the holiday and then we have winter break. So really November and December, they're the two months with the least amount of instructional days and hours. And starting and stopping, and I'll give an example, we have not had kindergarteners in. You know, kindergarteners may be coming from a previous preschool, pre-COVID. You know, what is, you know, just the kindergarten transition in is going to take some very thoughtfulness because again, they're coming in with a very different set of protocols than we've ever had to use before. So, you know, again, that's a lot of, been a little bit of our topic of conversation is what does that look like? And how will we slowly phase in? Because they made that clear. You can build it over 14 days, but you can phase it in and what that looks like. So that's our general approach right now.
Can we start with the third graders and work down to the kindergarteners?
Again, those are conversations with many people right now.
I had a question for you, Jen. What is the purpose of the next survey? Maybe I missed that part.
So we had talked with the community and families about, when we originally did the survey, I want to say it was back in July. It was for the first semester. We really wanted to say to families, here's first semester. We're also going to ask you again about if you have a change from what you saw first semester to second semester.
Yeah, when we offered them limited interaction, limited in-person.
Yeah, versus the hybrid. So now that people have a little bit more understanding of what this might look like and then what virtual would still be, again, virtual will be very similar to probably what we're doing now. I think that's some of the conversation that we're also having with that approach. You know, we want to make sure that parents have that understanding because we also know that some parents may not want their students back in-person and we understand that and our job is to still educate them in that virtual approach.
I guess I was thinking more of the programming that's, for example, say, Talmage. So so many children got a chance to take either music or this semester and the next semester they could do the other one. So I didn't know if you were trying to like just extend the semester or it had nothing to do with that.
Yeah. It's just, again, students will still have those options to be able to do that. It's again, just now working of, can we work our way in? Can we successfully shift to hopefully less than 50 because then we could, we can, could start to build into a K-12? But at this point, based on where the metrics are, and again, you know, Jason and I talked today a little bit about getting some, we talk with Polk County at least usually once a week, but we may need to be doing that a little bit more as we transition into this new approach.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, certainly nice to have the flexibility and I know you guys are going to work hard at coming up with the plan to try to get our kiddos back into schools safely and quickly as possible while monitoring, like Don was saying, overall rates, which are concerning. But we'll, we'll keep going, figure it out. So I think we have one more update then on policy.
Actually, I've got a couple more and then I'll just want to give you an update, talk about a policy and then there's one other piece that I want to add once we go through the policy. So we are, with all of this, part of what we have done is, again, obviously we are listening and getting feedback from families. So one of the things we are doing, and we shared this last week with our community committee, is that we're doing a little bit of a shift to the elementary schedule based off of parent feedback. And really now as we start to look at accessing the limited in person. So we've shifted a little bit. All three elementaries will be really identical in their approach. They each had a little bit of a different nuance because we thought, you know, that would be okay. Obviously, we're learning a lot from just in conversations with the community. So mornings from eight to 11 will really be focused on core content that includes social, emotional learning, English language arts and math. We're switching lunch to an hour because that was one of the big requests from families. So we're doing that from 11 to 12. And then the afternoon time, at least right now, as we continue forward from 12 to 2 o'clock, they'll be doing specialists, PE, music, and then really getting into some small groups if there needs to be some intervention or extension, those kids that are continuing forward. And we'll start that change on November 12th. So again, we're just working through that with our buildings currently. I just want to give you an update on enrollment. Again, just as keeping you up to date, again, last year we averaged 3,165 students. That was our average over all of the ADM periods. Our current enrollment on paper is 3,153. We just submitted our first quarter ADM report. We had a total of 350 students that were put into the report. That is good. Cece and I are very happy because I think we projected 3,151. So that's not bad as a starting point. 462 of those students were, we claimed as emerging bilinguals or emerging English language learners. And again, the first period of ADM starts the first day of school through 10-1. And then because of where we are, we don't drop. Normally we have 10-day drops. We don't do that. But we are not allowed to claim students who have not attended at all or have not, have zero absent or have not shown up to school. So their absences are unaccounted for. So those are the, those are some of the enrollment updates that, where we are at right now.
So we don't have to do a 10-day drop?
No, not this year. The only way we drop is if we actually physically get a request of transfer and we have, and they've tightened it up. We only have 10 days to get paperworked. So for example, if a student were to leave and go to Corvallis, we get a request, we have to have paperwork down in 10 days. We've had to push a couple of school districts because we have received families that have moved in and asked for paperwork and I've had to make a few phone calls as a superintendent to say, hey, we need these files. So.
Well, if we don't have to do the 10-day drop, how does the state determine whether or not they are in attendance?
So we're taking participation and again, if they're not in attendance or they, you know, they have, you know, not shown up to school, we technically can't count them. So Eileen Page goes through, just if you, at all. So if you, we have several school, or several students that have not either engaged or attended. Those get pulled off. So our enrollment count may be a little bit higher, but because of, that is the factor that's put in the ready schools, or excuse me, then we don't account for them right now. We're still trying to grab, we're still trying to have home visits and trying to get them engaged, but they don't actually count on our reporting right now.
If a student comes, it's gone nine days, comes one day, misses another nine days, comes one day, we still get to keep them?
Correct.
They don't get, their average daily membership is impacted, but we get to keep trying.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a different, that was some of the same responses we had, like, wow, okay, which again, makes sense now, now that we're in it.
That's why I like it, because there are some kids that are so at risk that, you know, they come to school one day in 10 and then they learn they're dropped.
Yeah.
Then they don't come back or they come back, you know, and we re-enroll them and do all that again. This at least gives us the freedom to try to, to help those students who are so disapprentised that they don't participate.
Yep, agree. So just a quick Wi-Fi update in our partnership with the cities in MyNet. We've had a total of 67 applicants that have come through. 11 families cannot receive access as they reside outside the MyNet area. Five families have declined. We have three families that are scheduled for installation and we have 48 families that are, have been installed and receiving. So we have a total of 99 students that we have recaptured because of this partnership with MyNet and the city. So we're really excited, continue to work on this. It's a first step.
Because the partnership is just, it just goes through December, correct?
Yep. So Cece and I are still working through with the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation. We hope to have a news here shortly, so we will share a little bit more in the future, but we are working on with the, hopefully with the foundation to be able to extend that. And we're still in conversation with the grantees as well.
Is continuing this service for these students because they've already been identified and the difficulty is if after the grant, if the grant was restricted to MyNet service. So after the grant, is there a way to extend that offer to other services? But trying to work with different providers and trying to understand how the students would be identified with all those different providers is the more difficult piece. But it will be extremely simple for community members to donate to keep these students going.
Okay.
So that's good, but we also have the hotspots and other things we can provide to other families as well.
Some of our next steps. So I'm going to switch to first reading of the policy and then I got one more after this. So this is, I'm just going to share in the packet is two items. Really, this is first reading for information only. In your packet, you have the All Students Belong policy as well as the administrative rule, which again, that is information only. The board doesn't vote on that. You just vote on policy, but I wanted to have it in here. And just as a reminder to we begin, as we begin and how we are here with the All Students Belong policy, we know that all students are entitled to a high-quality education experience, free from discrimination or harassment based off perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability or national origin. We want all students benefit from, we know that all students benefit from a calm, collected and happy environment and that all students should be free and receive their education without fear, hatred, racism or violence. We also know that is really important for our staff and the leaders to again, be free from discrimination and harassment. Really with our goal through this policy is to protect the mental, physical and social health of all of our students, our families, our staff and the visitors in our school. And again, this is removing any and all barriers that interfere with students' well-being, belonging and ability to learn. We know that if one person in a school community is treated poorly, everyone is affected and the presence of hate symbols on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, identity, sexual orientation, disability or national origin causes harm and significantly disrupts the operations of school. And again, the Oregon Board of Education has prohibited, and again, this is part of the embedded into the policy that really prohibits three specific symbols. And again, these are the most recognizable ones, symbols of hate and that includes the swastika, the Confederate flag and the noose. The District Equity Committee, as I shared before with the guidance from the Oregon School Board Association, is recommending this policy in the agenda for Central School District as the first reading. We will, the district is required to have the policy in place as of January 1st, 2021. And because I think this is a significant policy, we actually will go through all three readings of the All Students Belongs policy. The AR, the administrative rule that's in there, the Equity Committee did some work on it. Because I was pulled to the state meeting, I did not have a chance to follow up. So what is there is the original recommendation from the Oregon School Board Association. When I come with a second reading, the administrative rule may have some significant changes based off of just some of the work I saw the committee do at our last, at our last meeting. So.
A great amount of time on that first paragraph, just making sure.
In the policy, yes. So that originally was pulled from our Equity Education policy and I know then I said, you know, here's a starting point to use as an opening paragraph and they did spend some time on it and I was appreciative of the work that they did.
I have one little change though to that. If that's, so in the first sentence, it says 13, Central 13J School District and I was wondering if it should read Central School District 13J, like the header at the top.
Yep. I will shift that. And then again, just as a reminder, the administrative rules are really the day-to-day application. So that's what it would look like in the buildings and at the district office should something like that take place.
Yeah, we spent so much time on that first paragraph that we didn't get to anything else. It was, I mean, they were, it was, it was a pretty. It was, I mean, they were, it was, it was a pretty amazing discussion.
All right, so my last piece tonight. I, tomorrow is election day. And I, first off, I want to just remind everybody, please go out and vote. It is your privilege to be able to do that. So make sure you get your ballots in the Dropbox because I believe that's all that's left as we, as we, as we do that. Yeah, so a couple of things. As in elections, we know that all of us are awaiting outcomes. On election day, it can be emotional and filled with anxiety. No matter who wins, the days after the election leave some celebrating while others will be disappointed. Some people will feel isolated, angry, and may outwardly express their dislikes of the results. However, it is important as a community that we pause, be aware, and reflective on the impact the elections could have on our students. It is important to remind ourselves that we can have civil discourse, conflict resolution, and collaborative problem solving even when we may not agree. And I want to point out, we as a board in our last professional learning community that we had, had some really hard discussions. And I think it did a good example of how we can have disagreements but can still find ways to compromise and continue to move forward. So I am very appreciative to you all because I think those difficult conversations are important to have as we continue to lead in this school district. We also continue to do this with our staff. We have civil discourse and really good collaborative problem solving, again, even when we don't agree. We know that the uncertainty surrounding the pandemic, the impact of the wildfires, the distance learning format we have undertaken, and the general concerns of the future have created a great deal of stress and anxiety on our students, our staff, and our, and our community. We shared with our staff several weeks back guidance on political activities, free speech, and facilitating student conversations on controversial topics. I just want to remind everybody as adults, we are obligated to take the lead in seeking effective ways to help our students understand the issues and how the government serves the people to help them become good stewards of protecting the best ideals of this great country. So as we go through tomorrow and the coming days, regardless of the outcomes, I just want to remind everybody that all dialogues must begin and end with mutual respect for each other. Our students need to feel safe, seen, heard, and supported. And we, as adults, must serve as role models and strive to treat others and each other with respect and kindness as our students are watching us every day. And I'm going to end with a quote, quote from the daughter of Supreme Court Justice Ginsburg, referencing her relationship with Supreme Court Justice Scalia. Because for those of you that may not know, they were very close friends, although many times, especially on the Supreme Court, on opposite sides of court decisions. So I want to end with this quote as we head into election day tomorrow. What we can learn from the justices, though, beyond how to be a friend, is how to welcome debate and differences. The two justices had central roles in addressing some of the most divisive issues of the day. Not for a moment did one think the other should be condemned or ostracized. More than that, they believed that what they were doing, arriving at their own opinions thoughtfully and advancing them, was essential to the national good. With less debate, their friendship would have been diminished. And so they believed what our democracy. So again, with that, I just remind everybody again, tomorrow's election day, please get out and vote. But I ask everybody to remember our students are listening and to be thoughtful in how we have conversations over the next few days. So with that, I am, that is my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. That was very well said. So moving on to the board report, don't have a lot to share. Star Annual Convention this year is going to be virtual. It's in a couple of weeks on Saturday. I would encourage you to, to register and partake of that.
Do you want us to register ourselves or?
If you want to send those to either Emily or myself, we will get everyone registered if you want to on the fourteenth. So just send an email to me if you are going to be available and then we will get you registered.
To you or Emily?
Either one, yep.
How soon do we need to have that to you?
If you get that to us by the end of the week, I think we're okay. I'll, I'll do a reminder in the Friday report again.
Okay, and just wanted to do a brief report out from our PLC meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago. Superintendent alluded to it. We had a good discussion about the financial outlook at the state level. And from that, talked about shoring up our budget committee and doing some earlier meetings with the Budget Committee in the event that we have to go into some more challenging budget setting and prioritization next year, which is more likely than we'd like to see. We talked about attendance and the trends of attendance. Monitoring, really, what I took away from it was engagement. And are the kids that started out the year sticking with our distance learning model? And we talked about that in the context of extending the distance learning through the first semester. And if we do that, how do we make sure that we're doing the very best we can at connecting with the kids who are at, at risk? Then, you know, we had discussions about making sure we were doing everything possible to get internet access. And we talked about the numbers of home visits that were going on. And I, I thought that was pretty remarkable. And just wanted to reiterate and thank the staff for all the work that they're doing to go above and beyond and connect to the kids in this, in this environment. And then lastly, we had a really good discussion about equity and led to the addition of the Equity Committee topic on our agenda as well as set the stage for this policy work and more, more to come. So it was a very good PLC meeting, I think. And then last thing I had is just next, next month's board meeting is on the seventh of December. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Thank you, Don. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Vidal. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I actually had one. In section C on the board report, it says Director Darcy. And I was just wondering if that should be Director Kirk or just for.
Okay, we will, yep, we will make that change.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. And do we have Darcy on? Okay, well, we have, we have majority, so the motion passes. Guess we can figure that out later. So that brings us to our business agenda. We have a couple of different topics. So I'll turn it back over to the superintendent for the first topic.
Yeah, so the, again, this is just as we are, sorry, let me go back to the board agenda. I apologize, I just opened that up to make sure I knew where we were. This is just, again, this is the, we do actually need an approval of the SIA grant. So it is a fairly lengthy document, just again, outlining what we are responsible for. Again, typical grant agreement that we have done with the state before. So really, I am asking for approval to move forward with that so we can sign off and then get that back to the state to then access the funding.
So do I have a motion to approve the students' investment account grant? Thank you, Jan.
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions about SIA?
Kind of general question. So we, we're basically still working to the priority list that we originally submitted to this, right?
Correct.
And what is, what's, without reading through all ten pages here, what is our level of accountability then? Do we just do the best we can to spend that money wisely as far down the priority list as we can?
Yeah, what we, so to some degree, what we were able to do because we were, we were quite depthy and we did that intentionally because when we learned with the student success that we would be able to move at times around, that we didn't have to go one, then two, then three. That's, that's really why we took that approach. I mean, our list was over fifty potential options because we still weren't sure where, where the funding was going to be in percentage-wise. So again, there are some longitudinal growth targets that will, once this is, once this is signed, then we get to start having those conversations with the state. What do we expect our, our shifts to be? I think we're going to have a different conversation possibly than what we had before. You know, again, that's partly why we are shifting most of, at least for this year, with that funding to the mental health because we know how important that has been. So yeah, there, there's, in there, there's a project definitions and just some background and goals of what they would like to see. Again, we are, it's still going to be tied to attendance metrics, which we're monitoring. You know, ninth grade on track, which we continue to monitor, looking at just our graduation rates and different things like that. So many of the, the accountability that we already are, we're moving forward and will continue to move forward in our strategic plan. So again, we're, we're, we're going down that pathway with, with that. There's an Exhibit B that talks about a common framework and what they're expecting to see, what they would like to see, and what they would love to see. Again, a majority of some of those we are, are in place or moving towards. So again, I think we're, we're really in that good place to, to what I say, this is a first jumping off point, foundational pieces, and then continuing to build. Obviously, you know, we all know that as hard as we have worked for this money and, and the approaches, I think we're going to be dealing with some, as Director Love said, some significant things potentially as we go into the budget season, so.
But, but there's really no realistic way that we would end the, the term of this contract and, and end up in a position where we wouldn't be awarded all of the contract because we didn't meet some silly criteria.
Correct, at least from, again, from the conversations thus far, yes. And again, I think that's part of the next steps of the, once this is signed, then we get to negotiate what those metrics look like. Again, in a handful of conversations, again, it's, it's been good conversation. Obviously, we're in a very unique year, so we know that that's going to be part of that conversation. But again, I think that's partly even as we showed you at the, our PLC with the attendance. Like, we are trying to capture data to, to really show that kids are in attendance and, you know, that we're, we're seeing students on track. And we're seeing shifts and, and growth in reading, which again, we know that our amount of standards, we're doing less because we're being more intentional in what those focus of academic standards is moving, moving forward. So I'll have more to report once I get to go through that process with them.
I'm, I'm less worried about us being responsible. I'm more worried about the state giving us some screwy metric that we can't meet or.
And again, that's where knowing our data and, you know, what we're, where we are right now and, you know, strategically having that conversation with them, I, I think we'll, we'll be okay.
I think that's a really good question, Don. I just scanned the grant because I was trying to remember when the whole SIA came about. I thought that there was a, you know, heavy emphasis on accountability.
Yeah, there is.
So there is quarterly reporting that's required. So I would suggest it be a board topic when it is, when it's time to report that we have a chance to review that.
Yeah, and again, I, I think that there were this many metrics. I don't know that we'll be doing this many metrics in this current year. I think there are going to be a little bit of negotiation of where we think we can land. So yep, I will bring it back to the board.
Okay, any other questions about the grant? All in favor of approving the grant, please raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Darcy, raise your hand.
Oh, hey, Darcy.
Thank you, Darcy.
Okay. And that brings us to another topic, the facilities assessment grant.
And I will turn that over to Cece.
Thank you. We have had discussions prior to COVID about proceeding down the road of a new facilities assessment and maybe facilities long-range planning process to that. And we, early in the year, applied for available grants from the Oregon Department of Education that assist in those processes. We were awarded the two grants. We went ahead and put out a request for proposal to firms and that could express interest in either a facilities assessment piece or the long-range facility planning piece or both. And the facilities assessment is a comprehensive program, which is pretty well prescribed by Oregon Department of Education to look at building systems and viability of the physical plant of schools. And one of the main interests that we had particularly this time is looking at indoor air quality, right? That is typically one of the things that they assess for, but obviously, that is of greater interest now. So we wanted to go ahead and see if we would attract any interest in that process. We received thirteen proposals, twelve of which were qualified under the requirements. And each of those firms bid separately the work for the facilities assessment and long-range planning. So we have, the screening committee had sort of narrowed it down to a top four. And we had hoped tonight to be able to bring you a contract that you would be able to sign for one of those four firms. But there's really enough variance and sort of potential for different ways to take the process that we would like to get an extension and do some interviewing of the four firms. But we hate to wait clear until your December meeting to award a contract to one of those. So what we were hoping at this time, that you would authorize district staff to go ahead, although probably have one of you in on the interviews if you like, to authorize a cost of up to forty-five thousand just for the facilities assessment piece. Twenty of that is covered by the ODE grant. The other twenty-five, if it goes to the maximum amount, would come from our capital funding because this is planning for capital improvements and deferred maintenance. And, and be able to award the facilities assessment piece at this time to get that in and get that taken care of. Typically, it looked like the proposers of that really looked like a month-long, maybe six-week process. So that should be a fairly quick turnaround, which will give us some really good ideas of we have major systems issues we need to consider. And then delay the long-range planning piece, as you had all talked about, and start that conversation maybe later in the spring. At that time, we could engage the same firm since they all did propose to do the work as well. We could consider new RFP. Or we could return the grant to ODE and just say, we're not going to do it at all next year. We have until December thirty-first of next year to complete the process in order to get the grant. And all the firms that we are considering really are looking at a six-month timeline to do the, the planning part, the long-range facility planning part. So up to you to determine when, when everyone will have the capacity to really engage ourselves in that because that's a lot of conversation, a lot of really talking through what we want from our schools and how that might change now, right? Our, our schools will probably look different in the future. And thinking that through with members of staff, administration, families, and the board takes a lot of time, we know we don't have right now, but it is something we can't put off too long. Because even if we continue to have students in distance learning and rearranging our building use, if we suddenly got a lot of our students back, we, we still have space problems, right? And we still have a lot of construction going on in our community and folks trying to move in. Houses are being sold before they can barely get on the market and there's a lot of demand. So we, we don't want to put it off too long, but we certainly don't want to deal with it at this time. So the information is there, and I'm sorry that wasn't in your packet earlier to give. So the information is there, and I'm sorry, that wasn't in your packet earlier to give you a good sense of that. As I say, we had wrestled with trying to narrow it down to one firm and, and bring you a proposal tonight. But with the shift in guidance late last week through our timeline out of wax.
Okay, thanks Cease. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. It looks like we have a draft motion here in the package.
So Cease, I have a clarification. So this says, award a facilities assessment grant. Do you mean a facilities assessment contract?
The bid, sorry.
Okay, contract, right, is that?
Yeah, yep, the facilities assessment contract. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. I move to authorize the district to extend review of proposals and award a facilities assessment contract not to exceed $45,000 to be completed as soon as possible with further review of the long-range facilities planning process after the report is complete.
Thank you Peggy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Don. Any other questions from the board? All in favor of approving the motion for the facilities assessment and long-range planning process? Please raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes. And that completes our business agenda for this evening and moves us into our wrap-up. It's an opportunity for board members to share any comments before we adjourn.
I just wanted to express my thanks to the teacher tonight. Just told us about some of the good things in Chris Jordan. It was so refreshing to hear all of those really engaging activities that the kids are getting to, to, to do. It's such a different reflection from what one commonly hears about distance learning. And I, it just was very inspiring, very uplifting. And I would love to hear from other schools what they're doing because I'm sure our other schools are doing marvelous things too. But I just want to thank Chris Jordan, if he's listening, for, for that really upbeat, uplifting, inspiring report.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone else?
Well, I, I just have a, a comment, not really anything. I mean, it's actually pretty cool. But I have the, I'm fortunate enough to live very close to Central High School. Out of my backyard, I can pretty much see what goes on in the sports fields and, and whatnot. So I also work right across the street from the high school. And so in my trek from home to work, I was able to go through and see a couple of weeks ago just kids being able to work out as a team, social distance. I saw things that are going on. The, the coaches were, were, were paying attention. They were making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, you know, to keep safe. Masks on, spaced apart. And then I continued on, you know, another 200 yards or so. And then I saw all of the theater kids up in the parking lot spaced and masked and going through with what they're going to do with their, their fall recital, hopefully. And just, you could, I mean, you can't see smiles through masks, but you can see it in their eyes. And in all of those, it was just awesome to see. Yeah. That was my comment.
Thanks Vidal. Okay. I don't see no other comments. I think we are good. So thank you, everybody, for tonight's meeting and for being here. And Superintendent, for all of your ongoing efforts, very, very appreciated. And not just for you, but for the whole staff. I know everybody is running on fumes, but guys are doing great work, so really appreciate it. Okay, we are adjourned.
Hi, Darcy.
Good night, Darcy.